I'd like to call this Village Board meeting to order. This is number 3,092. It is March 9th, 2015. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy, Kim, here. Meyer, here. Semple, Sullivan, Boss, here.
Very good. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. Good evening. We have quite a full agenda tonight, lots of different items. And first, we will go to the approval of minutes. This would be a motion to approve the joint committee of the Board of Trustees, Economic Development Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes from February 16th, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Boss, second by Kim. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Very good. All right. That brings us to the time in the evening when we have public commentary. Would anyone present live wish to come up and address the board at this time? If so, raise your hand. Very good. We have one. Anyone else? Okay, ma'am, go ahead and come on up, and then just give us your name and address if you so choose, and...
My name is Arlene Lally. I am of Mundaline American Legion Auxiliary.
Do you want to cut the presentation? Want to wait? Okay.
Okay.
Ma'am, I think we have you down under Presentations in IB.
Oh, I'm in the wrong category.
Coming right up.
Sorry. I'll be right back.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, very good. I'll close the floor, and that takes us to the Presentations and Awards. We have five items here this evening. First would be a presentation regarding Gary Wilson. There he is. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Beauchamp at this time.
Thank you. We're here tonight recognizing Gary Wilson, celebrating his 30th anniversary with the village, which, as many of you know, Gary is the engineering inspector for us and has worked on countless number of projects for us. Beyond that, he's been kind of our, you know, as Joe DeVito is in the public work side of the House, Gary is our go-to guy for anything related to the infrastructure in town, mainly because he's probably built about 90 percent of the infrastructure in town. So, he's been an incredible asset to us, very valuable, important piece of our organization. And I just want to call the board's attention to the fact that he is celebrating his 30th year, and Gary is in the audience this evening, so if he could stand up, he's with the blessings of the world. Gary, thank you for all of your many years of service, and we look forward to seeing you for many more years.
Maybe 30 months.
I'll take what I can get. I'll take what I can get. Thank you.
No, that's my pleasure. It's been great working with everyone here, and it's been very rewarding. We've talked a lot together, and I appreciate it all. Thank you.
We'll do a little more for you. Come on up. We have a, what is this, a 30-year star award, I guess you could call it. It is a heavy star at that. But it just says, "For Village of Mundaline Distinguished Service Award, presented to Gary Wilson for 30 years of dedicated service to the Village of Mundaline, March 4th, 2015." That was your 30th, so...
That's 30 years.
Let me shake everyone's hand. Let me give you the box here, too. Congratulations, Gary.
Well, I'll get the first thank this way.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks.
Congratulations.
This is how you dress every day, right?
You know, you should have seen this morning.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, my size.
Very nice.
Starry.
We'll give them.
You can get the box later if you want. It'll be up here.
Does he want to introduce the people?
Oh, my wife. You know what? She has to put up with wine. My wife, Diana.
Hi. Well, real good. Thank you. Okay, now, that takes us to the part in the evening when we have the item two, under Presentations and Award. This is from the Mundaline American Legion Auxiliary.
I came up to test the microphone before. I'm sorry, I jumped out of line there. A little nervous, a little excited. I've already introduced myself, so I won't do that again, but I wanted to do a little presentation on a girl's state program this year. We've been running the educational program for the girls' state for 75 years. What we do is we select a girl who's just finishing her junior year in high school, and we send her down for an educational program. And it runs the educational program, and run her through leadership, her characteristics, her abilities, and it's usually a six-day program. In a couple of days, I travel back and forth to Eastern Illinois. I also do some public relations with the American Legion Auxiliary, and this is one of our girl's state articles that had hit the newspapers. This year, we've had to go out into the community because we've lost our fundraiser for the program. So, we plan to go to various organizations and groups and see what we can do as far as keeping up with this program. Not only deal with the high schools here in town, we also deal with the Lake Bluff Post, who sends girls from Lake Forest, and we deal with the girls, the Graves Lake Post that sends girls to Graves Lake. So, we have a variety of girls that go, but because we've lost our fundraiser for this year, the ladies have decided to go out into the community and see what we can do as far as collecting donations. The program has been run for so long, and the girls come back, and they're all excited about having been able to go. It's an educational program. It covers local government. It covers state government as well. They run, they campaign, they make posters. The college is just filled with advertisements of what office they are going to run for. There's a very large election process, excuse me, and the girls have an installation. They get all dressed up. They're all excited when they come back. It costs us $330, and we usually send two students from our unit, but we also send about 13 students from the other posts that we deal with. They finance that. We also cover this in our newsletter. I brought some pictures. I brought an album that I give to the schools when we present the program, so they know. These are pictures of the students in all of the offices that they had run for, and they come back and they have a knowledge much, much higher than when they left, and they're so glad because they have also know that they have a large ability to do more things as a student and as a citizen as well. We also, the Graves Lake Post also addresses this with the village, and the village is very good and helps to sponsor students from there. And each year, we go to their meeting, and the girls thank all of the board members there as well. We're planning upon going out into the community, to different organizations, and, thank you, and do the same request. But this is a phenomenal program. This is one of my favorite programs, as far as the kids learning more about how to be a good citizen, how that they are capable of running for an office, and when they go out, some of the girls have been in the lawmaking process because they also learn how to take a thought and process it into a bill and then turn it into a law. So, this is one of the reasons why we have to get out there and explain what we're trying to do as far as education and on the girls. We have a lot, a lot of other programs that we deal with as well in the community, and we've been doing it for a number of years. And I won't get into that because we just want to get into this particular thing. So, that's what I'm here for today, is to explain the program. And I can pass this book around if anybody's interested in looking at it. It gives quite a synopsis of what the girls do and what they are capable of doing when they come back. Thank you for having me here today.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, the Human Relations Commission Annual Update. Mr. Raymer?
Good evening. Good to see all of you. I assume you got a copy of the report, so I'll just quick, quick highlights. One thing I want to highlight, thank you for trusting me to lead the Human Relations Commission. I think one of our big successes so far was the Safe and Smart Community and Police Forum. In spite of sleety weather, the State of Union, and the Blackhawks on TV, we had somewhere between 100 to 120 residents of the village and members of the police department. Chief Gunther and his staff did an outstanding job presenting the goals that he and I agreed on, and they just did a marvelous job. And I'm sure you saw it reading the Herald. It turned into not only one, but two front-page stories. Followed up the week later, I had staff send out a copy to all of you. It was also the subject of the main editorial, affirming what was done and the lead that our chief and our police department is taking. Other police departments have contacted the village to get information about what we've done, so I'm very pleased with that. We've already had some preliminary discussion with the high school about turning a student-oriented version of this. The chief is very open to this, and I've talked to administrators unofficially so far at the high school. They're very open to doing something like this on a regular basis for freshmen as they come into the high school. I think it's very important that high school students have a positive and accurate understanding of our police force and how to relate to the police force. Talking to my own daughter, a number of athletes who come over, girls, to my house, I said, "What would you think of this?" She's a junior. "What if this had been done when you were a freshman?" And my daughter said, "If I'd had that before driver's ed and knew, for instance, excuse me, the standard procedure on a police stop, I wouldn't be so afraid when I'm out there. I would know what's happening." So, I think that's a great first step, and I want to see that continue. The One World Festival, our second One World Festival. We've already had our first planning meeting for the year, which I am able, because of my job flexibility, to be part of also. We've already made great progress. The entertainment's already lined up, and we're looking at a more public location for it, so I think the third One World Festival is going to be even better. The Diversity Awards, which took place last month, you were all here. I think we had a great organization and a great individual, part of the great things going in Mundaline that we could affirm. Number four, the Health and Wellness Expo. We've agreed, as a commission, it doesn't really line up. It wasn't well-attended. It doesn't line up with our purposes, so we are not going to continue that. I had multiple discussions with Margaret Resnick at the Mundaline Park District. She does not want to staff that because it's a Sunday morning during the fireman's breakfast. They already have a Health and Wellness Expo taking place at the rec center, so it's a duplicate ugly stepchild, if you will. So, that is ending. We're not going to continue it because there's no reason to. Point five, Summer Concert. We promote some version of ethnic music. We already have a band booked for August. That's all taken care of. And then lastly, the HRC Book Club continues. Attendance is climbing. We've improved a bit. How we get the word out, make sure people know that there are eBooks available, listening books, as well as reading for people like my wife who commutes to Wisconsin. She can listen to the book. That wasn't known before. So, another step forward. We've got the proposed budget attached. I won't review that. Any questions or comments?
Yes, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do I call him Commission Chair?
John.
Raymer? Is that what I...
You can call me John. That's what my mom called me.
Chairman Raymer? Okay. Chairman Raymer. Thank you. I had some questions, just because, you know, this is pretty new to me, and the One World Festival is also pretty new. I mean, it's only been the last two years.
Correct.
So, with this budget here, and I see that the increase looks like it's almost double, and I just had some questions about, like, some of the costs here. For the One World Festival, I saw that one went up. Is it for more tents, or could I ask more specifics on...
One of the things we're looking at is a different location, where we will have to pay for the location, and it'll be in a much more visible location. The One World Festival was not just funded by the HRC, but a number of community groups gave donations, so that we actually, my memory is we finished under cost, so we didn't even use all the budgeted money then. But we're trying to expand it, up the quality of the groups that perform, kind of like a car, you get what you pay for. You know, if you pay for a used car, you get a used car. If you pay for a nice new car, you get a better car. So, we're looking at upping the quality of acts. That's the main reason for the increase.
Okay. I was wondering if, like, I know in Schaumburg, they have like a festival, and like, the 15-minute in-betweens while people are getting ready or something like that, they'll put on martial arts or something like that. And I was wondering if we were also reaching out to our local community groups in addition to, like, we have a Filipino club in town, just so that, you know, the organic marketing it does is they'll bring their children, which brings, like, the entire family, and so we'll get, like, more bodies. Is that something that you've already considered?
There was a lot of outreach to a lot of groups, and in terms of the, one of the things we did that was new this year, instead of having a dead time gap between the performances, which then people tend to drift away, is we tried it for the first time. We think it worked very well. We had a two-person puppet circus act from Argentina, and that kept people there. We're going to do something different, though, this year.
I saw that for some of the police outreach, you were going to go to the Latino churches, but I also wanted to point out that there's that Universidad de Padres also. I didn't see it mentioned, so I didn't know if you knew, but, I mean, Luis is highly involved there, so... And then for the speakers and education, this was just something I was wondering, but if there are speakers that come to, like, the high school or the library, and they have some really good ones, could we, like, piggyback or do like a handheld thing as opposed to, like, just silo ourselves to, like, have our speakers, and like, the library has their speakers? Like, is there any way it could be combined, you know, efforts to bring more crowds who want and build a bond?
Well, I think the library, when they, and they do a great job, they bring in a lot of different people that are more in the entertainment side of things. And again, this is something like with the police forum that has never been done before with the HRC. So, we've already had discussions. I put the idea out, and we had a very spirited discussion, and a very positive one, at our last meeting, to try to put the issue of immigration out on the table, specifically Hispanic immigration. Given that Mundaline is 40 percent plus Hispanic, that's a reality of our community. So, we just started kicking around the idea, for instance, years ago, I saw a film called El Norte, which is the poignant story of a brother and sister who were caught in the Guatemalan Civil War, and they worked their way north to Los Angeles. I saw it back in the 80s after it came out. We talked about showing that at the high school and then having a board discussion after that with people who have experienced immigration. So, our purpose is different than the library in entertainment.
That's good.
So, that's an example of what we started discussing, but then we looked at El Norte and said, "Oh, it's two hours and 40 minutes. That probably won't work. We'll have to find a shorter movie," or something. So, that's why we requested this budget. We don't have anything nailed down yet, but as we're, I continue to try to move us forward to be educational and proactive, we can't come up with a great speaker who can come in in October and go, "Oh, wait, we have no money. We have to wait two years to do it. We want to do things this coming year." So, that's, doesn't mean we're going to spend all $3,000, but if you bring in a quality speaker and you pay any kind of travel expenses, even from Chicago, that can be very significant.
Okay. Thank you, because, I mean, it didn't have details, so I'm wondering. One more question I had, which might be more for this way, is I saw that you had asked for $1,500 for the summer concerts, and isn't the summer concert budgeted on its own, and so, like, they wouldn't have to ask for it? Like, we would have that money supplied for the summer concerts?
In the last year, we split the cost of the band between the HRC and summer concerts, and this year, we're doing the same thing. The HRC chose the band. It's a little more expensive, so the cross-funding worked very well.
Yeah. We've got a lot of things done already. We already have the group lined up, Vandalaros, which is an outstanding group. They agreed to drop their price down, but it's still even more than that, so the village is already contributing. But they're extremely well-known. They're recorded. They, we think with the right kind of publicity that we could see a huge crowd downtown for that in August.
That's great. All right. Thank you so much for answering my questions.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Pastor Raymer. Appreciate all your efforts.
Yes.
Has the Human Relations Commission discussed, thought about any methods of raising revenue at any other activities?
We have not.
No?
No.
You want to sell beer?
We don't have a liquor license.
Okay.
And I think that's outside of the ordinance, which I believe you helped draft.
Yes.
I didn't recall selling liquor.
No, okay.
We'll leave that to...
Well, I just...
John, we could add, though, that you're at One World Festival, there is a lot of donations, so the $7,000 doesn't really contemplate the revenue that comes in from the One World Festival.
Right.
That comes in, the library is a funder, so is the park district.
Park district, a number of businesses contributed.
Yeah, a number of businesses.
It was 12, 14, 15,000, something like that was the cost. Because there's, we don't, there's no charge to it. You know, and it's not just the HRC. There's many organizations that put One World Festival, and again, because of the flexibility of my job, I was actually able to attend the planning meetings, which had never happened before. So, I was more involved in it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Well, my compliments. I went to the police forum. It was, you know, outstanding. You did a great job, you guys.
You did.
Look forward to the coming year, and we'll certainly take your budget. We have the budget meetings coming up, and, you know, we'll take it certainly under advisement and great consideration. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
All right. All right. This takes us to presentation. We're going to do a little proclamation here, and this is for the, this is recognizing the Lake County Center for Independent Living. They are celebrating their 25th year this year. And so, before I read this, I was told that there's a number of important people here tonight, and I just want you to raise your hand, maybe wave to the crowd, all right? There we go. Well, let me read your name. Let's see who you are. Just a second here. All right. So, Kelly Brooks, Executive Director. There she is, right there. Claudia Stevens. Very good. Donna Rasmussen. There she is. Vanessa Gonzalez. Excellent. Amanda Mullins. There she is. Chris Holmes.
Here.
There he is. Laura Mellon. There she is. Judy Honig. Very good. All right. Well, thank you for attending tonight. Let me read this. This is a mayoral proclamation, recognizing Lake County Center for Independent Living, their 25th years of service to the Lake and McHenry Counties. Whereas the Center for Independent Living is a not-for-profit, 501(c)(3) organization that has served people with disabilities in Lake and McHenry County for 25 years, and whereas the Lake County Office of the Center for Independent Living has been located in the Village of Mundaline since 1992, and whereas LCCIL assists youth and adults with disabilities to live independent, active, and fulfilling lives by providing access to educational programs, living skills training, employment readiness, assistive technology training, support groups, peer mentoring, and more, and whereas the Lake County Center for Independent Living is governed and staffed by a majority of people with disabilities who have a firsthand understanding of their disability experience, which enables the organization to best serve its patrons, and whereas each year, the center serves without charge an average of 2,000 individuals, many of whom live at or below the federal poverty level, and whereas over the years, the Mundaline Village staff and the Lake County Center for Independent Living staff have worked together on projects of mutual benefit, and whereas the Mundaline Village Board is proud of its partnership with the Center for Independent Living and pleased to have had the center located in downtown Mundaline for 23 years. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Mundaline that the Lake County Center for Independent Living is hereby officially commended for the excellent service it has provided to Lake and McHenry residents and the residents of Mundaline for 25 years. Be it further proclaimed that the Village of Mundaline urges the business community, civic leaders, elected officials, and general public to generously support the center's 2015 Silver Anniversary Gala benefit on April 25th, 2015, 15, at the Doubletree Hotel. It's on my calendar, and my wife and I, you know, it's on our calendar to attend that, and I hope that everyone watching certainly considers going to the April 25th Gala at Doubletree. Now, to sign up for that, do we go to your website? Is that kind of what we should do there to...
He sent you an invitation.
Right.
That included the trustees. You know, Victor, he sent an invitation, so if you didn't get one, there's the advertisement on the website.
Excellent. Okay. So, you weren't, didn't have a mic, so let me repeat that. So, many people in the community got an invitation, so go ahead and respond to that, RSVP. And then also, if you didn't get one and you want to attend, you can certainly go to the website, and there's an advertisement there as well. Okay? I went there the other day and had a great discussion with lots of folks about village issues. It was wonderful. We went pretty deep into the weeds on some details on things in town. It was great. Had a great time, and I'm looking forward to the gala, and congratulations on 25 years of service for us. Thanks so much. All right. Okay. Oh. Well, I should get this. Yeah. You know what? I have this for you. Come on up. I'm sorry. Well, here it is. Kelly Brooks, right? Excellent. Well, there you go. Thank you very much. Let's give him a hand, folks. All right. Let's see. Finally, we have a proclamation. You can check your packets. This is for the Change Your Clocks, Change Your Batteries Week. Happens twice a year, and I pretty much give the same points every time. A few years ago, there was a fire down by Diamond Lake, a house fire, and I think the people's lives were spared because they had working batteries in their smoke detectors in their home. Real simple thing to do, if, you know, once you change the clocks, focus on your batteries, change those, just check those, because it could save your life. And so, we, just a great reminder, and we, again, twice a year, we always say that. So, there's that. That ends my report. There's no public hearings. Oh, excuse me. No, that ends the Presentations and Award. Now we go to the mayor's report, and then on to the trustee reports. Okay, we're running a little, we have two trustees out. They were ill this morning, and so, we have two missing, but nevertheless, we are going to proceed with a discussion, and this regards the governor's proposed reduction by 50 percent from the local government distributive fund, and we're going to hear some information from Mr. Libado, toss out a proposal or two, and then let's go around the horn and have a little discussion amongst the trustees and anyone else, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
people's lives were spared because they had working batteries in their smoke detectors in their home. Real simple thing to do. If, you know, once you change the clocks, focus on your batteries, change those, just check those, because it could save your life. And so, we, just a great reminder, and we, again, twice a year, we always say that. So, there's that. That ends my report. There's no public hearings. Oh, excuse me. No, that ends the presentations and award. Now, we go to the mayor's report, and then on to the trustee reports. Okay, we're running a little, we have two trustees out. They were ill this morning, and so, we have two missing, but nevertheless, we're going to proceed with a discussion, and this regards the governor's proposed reduction by fifty percent from the local government distributive fund, and we're going to hear some information from Mr. Libado, toss out a proposal or two, and then let's go around the horn and have a little discussion amongst the trustees and anyone else, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go. I distributed earlier this evening to everybody a memo that essentially outlines some of the impacts that the proposal from the governor that he's floated out there, the impact that this would have on the village. We notified the board of this maybe a couple weeks ago, a week ago or so. For the audience, the impact of the proposal to reduce the local government distributive fund would be about one point five million dollars in lost revenue to the village. And so, I tried to quantify this and put this in real terms to the village board on what that would mean, and I had some help from Mr. Haywood, and I've given some examples of what one point five million dollars means to the village, and the first example is that's the equivalent of eliminating the building department, the community development department, and the finance department, or about sixteen jobs. That accounts for about six percent of our general fund operating budget, and certainly there are other things that we'd have to do that would be more catastrophic. As you know, we have an annual vehicle and equipment replacement program that runs roughly about a million dollars a year. That would probably be first on the radar screen to eliminate something like that, and I think the board is well aware of the impacts that not keeping up with the replacement of our equipment has on our budget over time. So, then, we looked at, well, if we couldn't live without the one point five million dollars, what would that cost the average property owner in town to raise one point five million dollars in property taxes? So, if you take an average home price in town of two hundred thousand dollars with a home value of two hundred thousand, that would mean that you'd have to increase their property taxes, the village portion of the property tax, twelve point five percent, or about a hundred and thirty dollars per year for every homeowner with an average home price of, or market value of two hundred thousand. So, that's significant. So, I've simply put here one alternative solution. I think it's, would be nice to say that we think that the state ought to get their house in order, and the village should not participate in any way of doing that. That might be a little unrealistic and short-sighted. So, one thought was, we've always wrestled with this prevailing wage law, and if we, one suggestion that we came up with is, if they could modify that act, we know the impact of what the prevailing wage law has on our projects. That increases our costs roughly twenty percent. So, when you look at ten million dollars that we spent on capital projects this year, that would equate to about one point five million dollars in additional costs that we wouldn't otherwise have if that act was not in place. So, perhaps it's not a fifty percent proposal, as the governor has suggested, reducing the revenue distribution, but maybe it could be twenty-five percent as a suggestion. So, I just simply put this out there for the board to think about, to discuss, and I think ultimately, we're looking for a direction. We are suggesting that a letter be sent to our legislators from Mayor Lentz that would outline some of the comments that the board makes tonight.
Okay. That's the information, and we can open it up for some discussion. You want to kick it off? That'd be great. Go ahead, Trustee Sullivan.
Turn my light on. Well, this is not a new suggestion. This is, this has been put forth for three or four legislative sessions, and it's never come to pass. However, I take it a little more seriously that the new governor has brought this forward, although twenty-five percent reduction is not going to happen. Fifty percent, certainly not. But there may be some graduated type of decrease in these funds distributed to local governments from the state income tax, and that's what everybody has to understand. We're talking about the amount that the state sends us back on a per capita basis of the income tax that they receive, the total income tax. We get so much per population number, and it's been divided by the population on a ten percent basis. That is, the state takes ten percent of the income tax, distributes it to the municipalities. Now, we may have to deal with some type of reduction, but it's not going to be a one-year substantial reduction, in my view, if it's anything. But I like the idea, as Mr. Libado knows I would like, the idea of dealing with this prevailing wage law. And everyone should understand, at this desk and out there in the audience, whether you're in a seat or whether you're on television, the prevailing wage law is something that states developed in the nineteen thirties during the Depression, an offshoot of the federal Davis Bacon Law, which was meant to set a floor under wages during the Depression, so that people made something while they were working for government projects, and so that any project of two thousand dollars or more was subject to prevailing wage. And it's now three thousand dollars. From nineteen thirty-three to now, it hasn't gone up. That's not the main problem. The main problem is now, it's not a floor under wages, it's a ceiling, and it costs units of government, of local government, at least twenty percent more to build roads, sewer plants, libraries, schools, twenty percent more at least, and some say a lot more, because of prevailing wage. Now, if we didn't have prevailing wage, and we were able to decrease the cost twenty percent, I think we would do a lot more work. And a lot more work would result in a lot more income tax, and more income tax and more jobs is exactly what the state of Illinois needs. So, I know this governor is on the right track. He's got it figured out, and I think we have to be patient with him. It's not going to happen, we're not going to have a brick drop on us in regard to revenue loss, but I think he's got the right idea, and I'm fully supportive of the course he's taken.
Okay. Who else? We can go down. Do you want to go in order? All right. Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So many layers. That's what he said is right. It's great. The Village of Arlington Heights, as a board, sent a letter to the governor saying, you know, how much that kind of funding cut would hurt them, and they in unison said that they wouldn't stand for it. So, I, I'm just wondering, you know, you tell me, why we couldn't do a letter like that and then be negotiated down versus telling them we would take a twenty-five percent cut or, you know, negotiating upfront? You know, I'm just wondering, because this hasn't passed yet. And, you know, also too, to add to what Trustee Sullivan is saying, Chairman Lawler of Lake County is also talking to the Rauner team on taking out the unfunded mandates. So, I mean, that might help some of this too. So, I just don't know if I saw the harm in sending a letter saying that, you know, we wouldn't want to put this burden on the residents. You know, this shaking of Springfield is great, and maybe there's some other cuts you could make, but that municipalities were so lean, we could have been like Six Sigma Black Belts, I mean, through all the years of recession and like carving it down the way it was. And so, at the end of the day, I really want to be able to look the resident in the eyes and say, "We did everything we possibly could, and this is the end result," you know, but that we had fought, you know, for it. I mean, not saying what Sullivan said is not valid, Trustee Sullivan, because like I said, Chairman Lawler is working on that, and that could actually, you know, help some of this as well. I just didn't see the harm in, you know, sending a letter as a board, you know, to speak out for it.
I think the suggestion is that you would authorize me to send a letter. At this point, you know, in, the notion would be to send it to our legislators, our representatives, because the negotiating that goes on with the governor is going to be done by the House and the Senate, and so, we want to influence the people that really are going to be doing the negotiating, you know. We could send a letter to Governor Rauner. I don't know that that's going to have the effect, the full frontal effect, if we went to our immediate reps.
So, you're saying we should send it to the governor?
Yeah, but why can't we do both?
Yeah, we could certainly do both.
We could do both, I suppose. It would be targeted at our legislators, though, certainly, but, you know, it could go to both. Why not?
It's only paper.
Sure. Sure. You have the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would like to see us send a letter to the governor as well as our legislators, because I think that if he understood the full force of what he's suggesting, perhaps he would reconsider. And, you know, when we heard Governor Rauner talk last week, he was big on saying, you know, that things, the power should come back more locally so that people have more impact, and that would be great if the state was going to stop collecting money and, and say, instead, let your municipalities collect it. But there's, what he's saying is that the state will continue to collect the same amount of money, it just won't be shared. So, instead of the state tightening their budget, he's suggesting that we, who already have, tighten ours. I find fault in that logic a bit. If, again, if, as he's saying, let's give the power back locally, then great. Let's let the state stop collecting that money, and we can collect it, and we know how to spend it better than they do. If that's the logic, I'm all for it. But if they're going to continue to collect that money and keep that money, and then put it on us to have to raise taxes to upset our local homeowners, then I don't think that he's gotten it quite right. So, I would support us sending a letter to the governor and our legislators, and I would support us saying that we are not at all in favor of this reduction, and I would support the letter suggesting that if they wanted to truly be helpful, they would get rid of all their unfunded mandates, including prevailing wage, and that would be hugely helpful to help us decide what is best for our community and helping us control our costs better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Meyer?
Yeah, I don't want to duplicate, but I would agree with what Trustee Voss said, but in addition, I don't think I would want to make any of these alternate solutions in that first letter. I think we send it, we object to it. I think down the line, if there is no other recourse and one of these things is going to happen, at that time, that's when you take this out of your pocket and say, "Okay, if this is an absolute mandate, then we'd like to, you know, have you look at it this way." But at this point, I think we just send a letter that objects to the basic principle of, you know, everything that we've discussed.
Well, certainly, coming off of the recession and the cuts we made, you know, I think the municipalities all over Illinois really are the most, some of the most efficient, lean muscle of the delivery of public services, really, that we have in the whole state of Illinois. It's right here, you know? Police, fire, roads, public works. We're running these extremely efficiently, and to dig in, it's kind of like going on a crash diet. I've done some of that before, and whenever you do that, you tend to lose muscle mass when you go on a crash diet, and the governor's proposing a crash diet on this budget, and it's going to, if it affects us like this, we're digging into some pretty lean muscle to come into us and expect some cuts in some of the things we do, and we wouldn't have any choice but probably, as Trustee Voss said, to, you know, to keep services where they're at or even near. We'd have to do something with taxes, and that's just not acceptable. I agree. So, with this letter, I'm hearing that you, that you don't want any alternatives presented in the letter. Is that correct? Yes?
Well, I agree, we can, we can communicate to the governor and to our legislators, and of course, they'll have enough paper to paper their ceiling and their wall, and probably their floor. Everybody's going to say the same thing.
Yeah.
But suggestions in regard to mandates, a real effective one, the suggestion in regard to prevailing wage, all of these things will allow us to use our present revenue more effectively. And if we have to save some of it, then, then we'll have to. You know, we've all received a memo regarding to our wastewater treatment plant, where we got a conditional permit from the Illinois EPA with seven different suggestions, crazy things that, that they want us to do, reducing phosphorus, doing this, doing that, and they haven't figured out what it's going to cost us. They just issue these mandates like they pick them out of a hat somewhere. They don't do all that much, except cost a lot of money to local taxpayers. But we have a governor who knows that right now, who's focused on that, who is not being led by the nose by labor organizations in this state, and in fact, just the opposite may be happening very shortly.
Okay. Well...
So, yeah, send them a letter, but make those suggestions. Hey, reduce these mandates.
About reducing...
Stop this, get an end to this prevailing wage.
Now, we have examined the unfunded mandates and how they would affect us, and it's nothing like the prevailing wage in terms of impact on our budget. I mean, it's, it's some very nuisance of items, like you suggested, okay? But when you want to dial it down to the dollar number, it doesn't have nearly the impact. Now, when you look at, I think Aaron Lawler put together a list, and the county suffers greatly under the unfunded mandates.
Sure.
Just all over.
We all do.
Very substantial. But in this letter, we could certainly include unfunded mandates if you want, but certainly the prevailing wage, we need to hammer home, and it's, I'm hearing that you don't want there any, you know, no mention of alternatives in terms of the reductions. Can we leave the unfunded mandates out? I mean, focus on the prevailing, we can mention...
Are we going to focus prevailing wage?
Focus on prevailing wage.
I'm good with that.
You know, in my view...
I mean, we can throw it in, but it's not going to, you know...
In my view, in observing units of government for a number of years, nothing fosters efficiency like no money.
[laughing]
Yeah, I mean, all of a sudden, we become really good at getting along with what we've got.
Yep.
Not that that's the greatest solution in the world, but if it's the only solution, then it's one that we will do effectively. Yeah, send the letter. Tell them baloney. You know, you raised, the state raised the income tax rate over sixty percent a number of years ago, and we didn't get another nickel out of that.
No.
And they took all that money, blew it down a rat hole, as far as I'm concerned, because we're in no better shape now than we were before that rate went from three to five percent on income in Illinois.
Yeah.
And so, the more money they got, the more they're going to spend.
Okay.
And that's kind of true of all of us.
Okay. Well, then, we'll throw in a mention of mud-funded mandates.
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
As the way the wind is blowing. Very good. Are you okay with that, Trustee Meyer? Okay, very good. Okay, then we'll do that.
When, when do you anticipate sending the letter?
This week.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll send it this week. Very good. That's it for my report. We'll go to the trustee reports. We're going to have some, because we're two, two down here, we'll go to the alternatives here. So, Public Works Committee, Trustee Meyer.
I actually don't have anything for the report tonight. Excuse me. Getting confirmation that there's nothing to bring up related to public work, so I'm done.
Very good. Thank you. Finance Committee, Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have a motion, and that is to pay an amount to AT&amp;T for a number of bills totaling thirteen thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents, and I'll make that motion to pay these bills.
Second?
Motion by Sullivan, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, motion. Motion, motion. Mayor votes yes. Make it four.
Very good. This evening, on our omnibus list of motions, we have a motion to pay our bill list. That amount is $1,69,289.63. And some of the significant amounts there on are, one of them is for $53,695, the purchase of two Ford Explorer vehicles, one for public safety, one for public works. We have a bill for Lake Michigan water, $168,992.00. Pirtano Construction Company for the Route 60 Water Main Project. We have a bill of $115,768.80. Is that the final bill for that? No, it's still, still working on it. Okay, and then finally, a large piece of equipment, the Vector. That's a sewer cleaning machine. Vector is a term evidently the cross between a tractor and a vacuum.
I would have to ask the vendor, but I'm assuming that sounds, that sounds good. We'll go with that.
Right. It's a wonderful machine if you've got a plugged sewer and your basement's full of stuff. Anyway, it's $372,960. And that completes my report. But, Mr. Mayor, I had some other comments that I think I've been thinking about for a long time. And it's been brought to a head recently, where we've had some controversy lately in regard to the state of our commercial health in the village of Mundaline. Before I talk about that, I'd like to let you know, many of you know I've been around a long time. This June will be our family's 48th year in Mundaline. I've served on a plan commission, I've served on village, on school boards. I've been in this seat for 16 years, and this is my third to the last meeting. At any rate, I see a lot of concern about the state of the village in regard to its commercial health, especially in regard to restaurants, and especially comparing us to the village of Libertyville. You know, I grew up in Libertyville. I went to Libertyville-Fremont High School before there was a Mundaline High School. Still got a little, a lot of real good friends in Libertyville, and of course, a lot of real good ones in Mundaline. My wife and I got out of college, we came to Mundaline, and we started a business. Mundaline has been awfully good to us, awfully good. So it's with some dismay that I see a few fellow residents become very critical of their home, especially in regard to restaurants. Well, this afternoon, I went on Libertyville's website, and I thought, boy, they must have a lot of restaurants, and we must not have many at all. I discovered that Libertyville has, on their website, at any rate, 87 restaurants. And I think I've been to half of them. Thirteen of them, I would categorize as fine restaurants, that is a restaurant with a full menu, you know, a three or four-course menu and a full liquor license. So then I went to Mundaline's list of restaurants. We've got more restaurants than Libertyville does. We have the same number of fine restaurants. In fact, two of them are my favorite restaurants. I think one of the real best-kept secrets in Mundaline is some of the fine restaurants that we have here. I don't go to Libertyville to a restaurant. I don't want to drive 15 miles. I don't want to drive around for 15 minutes looking for a parking place and then walk three blocks to a restaurant and pay 20 to 30% more. The $15 glass of wine is not my thing. That's why I live in Mundaline. So it confuses me when I hear that we don't have any restaurants. I just, I don't understand it. These are facts. You know, negatives aren't to be expected. That's human nature. You know, consider the guy who killed the golden goose. We're not about to do that here. But at the same time, consider Mundaline's positives in comparison to the town that you are so envious of, little small number of you. Industrial base, far, far bigger in Mundaline than in Libertyville. Municipal facilities and services, in my view, substantially superior. I'm talking about police, fire, and public works. Golf courses, one of my favorite things. Libertyville's got a little nine-hole course that the kids play on. Mundaline has five 18-hole golf courses. Two of them, championship courses, ranked the highest in the Midwest. Parks, Mundaline has twice the acreage Libertyville does in its parks. We've got a thriving health center. We've got a water park. We've got a kids' sprinkler park. Our recreational facilities are far superior. Our library. Libertyville just spent $7 million to add 10,000 square feet to their library. And they still can't handle, hold a candle to our library. The work at our library, tell us, people from Libertyville, come over here. And we welcome them. That's fine. Schools. I know we have good schools. I spent a morning in District 77, Fairhaven School in Mundaline. I do it every year. It's a great school with a great staff. So too, our District 75, and our District 79, and our high school. Anybody sitting out there or looking at this on television thinks we don't have one of the best high schools in Lake County, needs to go there. Unfortunately, they don't give us the average ACT score of the top 20 students. Sure, our demographics mean that we've got some kids that need some help. And of course, they enter into the average. Don't think for one minute that the students at Mundaline High School don't have every educational opportunity that the kids in Libertyville or anyplace else have. I can tell you that with every bit of confidence that I can, I can, I can give you. Beautiful places. Lots of beautiful places in Libertyville. Not so much in Vernon Hills. But you can combine all of them in Libertyville, and they don't hold a candle. There's a beautiful spot, that St. Mary the Lake Seminary, or lots of other spots in Libertyville. So I say this because I'm a little frustrated. I'm a little bothered by people who are so negative. So let's get together. Let's not forget our strengths as we work to make Mundaline an even better place to own a home and raise a family and work. And I thank you very much.
A motion regarding the, well, here, I'll just read. Motion to approve, no, no, no. Motion to pass an ordinance establishing the administrative procedure for the village of Mundaline to determine eligibility under the Public Safety Employee Benefits Act. I'll make the motion, and then we can explain it, I guess.
Okay.
Second?
Motion by Trustee Voss, second by Trustee Kim. Discussion?
Well, this is to change and allow for the first round of decision-making about eligibility under the Public Safety Employee Benefits Act to be done by the administrator so that if it was a clear-cut case and we didn't have to have an attorney at the first round, it would save everybody money and time, correct? That's the way I read it?
Well, I will take a shot at explaining this. It's complicated. I've also asked Lynn Mailey, our HR specialist, to be here tonight, so to keep me out of trouble. And I know that we worked on this with our police chief and fire chief to make sure that this was something that we thought would be good for us to move forward with. There are, when you talk about disability, a full-time employee disability in the police and fire, that's all we're talking about.
Yeah. Can I just interrupt? Because I think we all get sort of the basic of what this is. We already have this. This isn't a new...
Correct.
...policy. All we're talking about is making so that there's an administrative...
Yeah, there's an administrative hearing process to make a determination on whether or not the qualifying event is considered catastrophic. And when a public safety is injured in the line of duty, and it's catastrophic, then they're entitled to certain benefits. And so, we're only talking about the procedures for making that determination.
Right.
And so, that procedure we're suggesting by ordinance would be a hearing officer procedure, in which we would employ, or appoint, I guess, a person, an attorney, that is, has experience in labor law, to make that determination based on the act. Right now, we do not have a hearing officer. One of the benefits of doing that is that we think it will also, in the long run, if you end up in one of these, they can get very costly. And, but any appeal that goes forward is done on the record that was created through the hearing officer process. So we think that that's a more equitable way for both the employer, the village Mundaline, and the employee, by having a third party make that determination.
And they can always appeal it to a court of law?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So, that's essentially what approving this ordinance will do, is establish that hearing officer process. Okay?
But doesn't, but doesn't the hearing officer process only take place in a more complicated case?
Correct.
Because if it were a simple case, you could make that determination at a local level...
Correct.
...without it going to a hearing officer.
Right.
Whereas, if it were more complicated, then it might need to go to a hearing officer.
Yes, that's correct. In the case where it's clear-cut, obvious, in line, in the line of duty, catastrophic injury, and we've been fortunate, knock on wood, to very few and far between. But in those instances, the village administrator would make that determination that it qualifies, and they'd be entitled to the full benefits of the act. In those instances where it's not so clear-cut, and those are more commonplace, there is this third party that would make that determination.
Anyone else? Okay, great. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes. Motion carries.
Uh, because I knew I was going to be... Is there anything...
That we should know?
I actually do not have anything this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
Chief, take it from fireman. Quiet.
Good. We like quiet. Quiet is all good.
Right, well then...
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, coming back to you, Trustee Voss, Community and Economic Development Committee, we have a few things there that should promote a little discussion.
We do have a few things here that are going to promote a little discussion. Before we get to them, I just would like to announce that the GLMV, GLMV Relay for Life will be held June 27 in Vernon Hills this year. We've hosted it for several years, and it's only fair. And the first Relay for Life GLMV fundraiser will be this Saturday at HITS from 4:00 to 10:00. And HITS is donating a portion of their proceeds to the GLMV event. We're still looking for any other business sponsors and participants. You can give me a call if you're interested. Moving on, the first thing that we have is the sign code. So, can we discuss it without a motion, Charlie, or do I have to make the motion first?
You should make the motion first and get a second.
Okay. Then we can amend it if we need to. So I'll make a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance adopting a new sign code for the village of Mundaline with the proposed revisions. Second?
Motion by Voss, second by Trustee Kim. Discussion?
Well, I'd just like to point out a few things about it, if I can. The first thing is that we have been working on this sign code revision for a few years now. And we, in terms of, it seems like whenever we do anything, we always hear from people, I didn't know you guys were talking about that. So let me just stop right there and say, in the few years we've been working on this, we've had five committee of the whole meetings, three public presentations, an online survey. It's been in our quarterly newsletter. It's been in our e-newsletter seven times. It, we've had two direct mail flyers that were sent, direct emails. It was announced and discussed at the Mundaline Business Alliance, and we have announced it several times at the village board meetings. So, with that said, there were a few items that last time it was before us were sort of decision items, and we had asked it to go back to the public before it came back to us. And I was just wondering if Victor or Amanda, if you guys could just speak to some of those public policy issues that we had talked about.
Sure, we can. I know that I have certainly put a fair amount of hours into this signed code rewrite, but I will admit, I have not put in the amount of hours that Amanda has put in to getting this document to the point that it is here. I know that she's put in a lot of hours with a lot of help from our consultants. Camero Arista is here to answer any questions. Amanda knows the document a lot, a lot better than I do. I know it, but I know it enough to be dangerous and to misspeak or misrepresent. So I will hand it over to Amanda to answer your questions and talk about the policy questions that were raised at a committee meeting here a couple of months ago.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there were about, there were three policy questions that you asked us to take to the local businesses and the sign consultants. And so I will go through those quickly. One is whether the sign code should limit the number of items of information on a sign to four or six items. You know, an item on a sign could be anything from the name of the business to the slogan of the business, a logo, et cetera. And so, definitely, a majority of the people wanted to see more items of information on the sign. So about the people that attended that particular meeting, there was one person that said four items was sufficient, and then 11 people said that they would like to see six items. There was some conversation at that same meeting where they discussed that they would rather see no restrictions at all, but it's very common to see restrictions on items of information on signs. The next was whether to allow neon and LED around windows. This has kind of been a trend. It's very popular in the city. It's something that we've seen start to pop up around the village. And one respondent said yes, seven said no, and three were unsure. But the majority said that no, they would not like to see that. We didn't take formal polls at other meetings, but at the other meetings, there was still some commentary that people did not want to see the LED around the windows.
Well, could you just announce the third one, then we'll...
Yeah.
...come back to the top. That'd be great.
The other was whether to change the window sign coverage, and that was from, we The other was whether to change the window sign coverage, and that was from, we currently allow 50%, and that's whether to reduce it to 30%. A majority wanted the 50%, so it was eight, eight people at that meeting wanted to see 50, two wanted to see 30, and then there were two that said neither, they wanted to see a visual comparison. You know, it's, it's very hard to, everybody has different window signs, so it's hard to really justify like a comparison without going through like a ton of pictures, but we could definitely do that. I have a large inventory of pictures of signs.
Right. Got that. Okay.
Yep. So, let's just understand, so, in this document that we have now, is it at four or six items?
Six.
It's at six.
Yes.
Okay. On the neon and LED surrounding the windows?
It's prohibited.
It's prohibited.
Correct. It's prohibited. We are not allowing the neon or LED around the windows.
So, you're talking about the outline?
Just the outline of, like, windows and doors. You could have a neon or LED sign in your window.
In the window, right?
Yes.
And just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this doesn't include holiday decorations?
Right, correct. It does not include holiday decorations.
Very good. And then, we kept it at 50?
Yes, correct. We kept it at 50%.
Percent cover.
And that was easy, or it's easier as well from an administrative standpoint. It's easier to kind of visually say that's 50 than to try to calculate a 30%.
Right. Very good.
Just on these three things specifically, I had a question on the neon LED. The last time it had come before us, it was a no LED, but neon is okay. So, with the new revisions, neither, like, both would be prohibited?
At the previous meeting, it was both were being recommended as being prohibited.
Okay.
So...
Did anyone come to the meetings that had neon or LED around their window?
Yes.
Okay.
We did have some representatives there.
And they were just like, they were probably in the yes vote, okay?
They were probably the yes votes. I actually don't know who the yes votes were, because, just a quick count, so...
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that somebody who actually did have, you know, the window outlines did, did come.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, oh, trustee Meyer, yes?
Yeah, thank you. I attended the last public meeting on the, that you had here with the sign code, and it was generally well-received, and there was a lot of favor to the changes that had been made all along, incorporating their viewpoints and feelings. So, from the meeting standpoint, they were basically well-pleased with the progress the sign code had made. My only comment on it is that while we do have a fair amount of pole signs that need some help in Mundaline, I still object to them unilaterally being banned because there are some very attractive pole signs. And granted, I know people are looking at the ones, a lot of them that we have, that may need some help, but because of that, I don't, I just don't think that we should be banning them completely, because there really, really are a lot of very attractive pole signs. So, that's my only bone to pick with the current sign code.
Okay. Yes?
General questions now about the sign code?
Okay.
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure, last time it had come before us, I thought the majority voted by attrition, but this one is by amortization? Is this correct?
Yes.
Yes.
The proposal is for amortization.
Five years. Everyone asks, so I will ask, so I know what to say. What about Bill's Pub sign? That is a pole sign with a letter board. Will that have to come down?
Yes. That is subject to the amortization if the board chooses to go through with that.
Did anyone from Bill's Pub come to talk about that sign?
No, not that I'm aware of. They did not sign in if they were present.
Okay. Just don't want them to do the, "Oh, we didn't hear about it until just now."
They def, they received the mailings, though.
Yeah, I mean, for sure. Trustee Voss went through everything, and like, you know, that's the thing, is like, somebody will always, no matter how much you do, be like, "I never heard this, you know, this is all news to me." And like, no matter how far and wide you put it out there, and so, I mean, it's good. We have seriously blasted it for years out there, and that was my concern, was that, you know, will they have enough opportunity to speak? And they certainly did. All right, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
It reminded me of something else that was one of the discussion points, on the fees for the companies that are going to be required to replace their signs. I know that there was some discussion at that public meeting about fees and potentially waiving fees and the cost of some of that, doing that. Have we come to any conclusion on any of that at this point?
We have a grant.
There, yeah, there is nothing that was discussed at a staff level yet about fee reductions. We did discuss very preliminary with building about changing some of the fee structure in general for permits, but nothing is being proposed for, for change at this point, but that doesn't mean it couldn't in the future. The fees aren't actually addressed in the code itself.
Right.
And so, if that's something that the board wants us to look into, we will, we could definitely do that. But there is the grant program in place that people can apply to get some relief with replacement of signage. So, that's always a possibility, and we have that. That's a quick, readily available thing. In terms of the fees, that's something that we'd have to take a closer look at.
Right, and that was one of the only things that really came out of that last meeting, was a discussion on, on fees and some concern in that area, and it isn't addressed here. So, I, I think, I know I, for one, would like to see that addressed going forward, to come to some kind of plan in addition to, you know, the grant and that, because not everybody's gonna apply for that, not everybody's gonna get
Right.
... accepted for that. And so, there are, there could be a whole host of people that aren't able to take advantage of that and would like some kind of relief.
Sure. And to put it in perspective, in the report, we did, staff did an inventory of the signs in the village, and of the commercial signage, there were approximately 876 signs, and 214 of them were non-conforming. In some way, either it was a pole or a cabinet sign, looking at that perspective, I didn't look at landscaping, I didn't look at setbacks. In terms of industrial, there were 162 signs and 27 were non-conforming. Percentage-wise, you know, it was about 22% of signs. So, it, signs vary in price, it depends on what somebody wants to put up, so it could be, you know, an expensive venture, it could be a more expensive venture. I know that I did discuss a little bit with one of our local sign contractors, some ways that he could even, he was asking about modifications to cabinets to kind of make them into what, what we're looking for under the new code, and there are some creative ways to reuse some of those structures, but meet kind of those goals of the new code as well.
Yes, trustee Voss?
Thank you. So, my question is about, you know, my fave electronic signs.
Yes.
So, I, and I know that I marked this, and I, of course, can't find where I marked it, and my little computer's having some major problems this evening. So, currently, we require a 15-foot setback?
Yes.
And that will remain?
The proposal is to reduce it
To.
... to five feet.
And why do we want them within five feet of the curb? Because really, that would be like smack dab on the sidewalk, right?
We have granted some variances in the past for setbacks. St. Andrews is one of them, and Consumers Credit Union's another one of those. It would be closer to the sidewalk, but there's still typically the parkway that comes in between and the sidewalk, and then the five feet for the signage. The reason for the proposal is that a lot of people are asking if they want to retrofit their signs that they already have in place with a cabinet, and many of those signs are closer than the 15 feet. It's a board policy decision. If you do not want that, you want us to change it back, we can definitely do that.
Could, you, you said many people that are thinking about retrofitting are closer?
Yes.
But they're, they don't have electronic signs?
They don't, but they have, there are signs that are already in existence. Typically, that's where the electrical's already coming through, and so, putting in an already expensive sign and then having to either relocate electrical and relocate foundations, sometimes it's easier for them to do it in the place that it already is, and...
Can you give me a, for instance, because I'm really having a hard time thinking of an electrical sign?
Well, the two, the Consumers one and the St. Andrews signs are the closest, for example, that I can, that I have off the top of my head.
So, and even though that they already have a variance, they'd have to either get another variance or move their sign?
Yes.
Are there other signs?
There are a lot of signs in town that are likely to be close, five feet or closer. That's because we don't have a setback requirement currently.
Well, I was just thinking that for those particular signs, we require a big frontage and a big parcel of land.
We do, correct.
So, are there other locations that are more likely to then get one of these, because they only require a five-foot setback?
I think an example might be Tavern on 60 sign. Like, that sign is likely one of those close signs to the property line, and so, if they were to ask for a sign, they'd either have to move it into their parking lot, further into their parking lot, or ask for a variance. But that, that's an example I could think of for a sign like that.
We, are we talking about two different things?
Yeah, yeah.
Electric signs and electronic signs?
She was...
Electric message signs?
No, I'm talking about electronic message signs.
They don't have two and a half acres, though.
They don't have two acres and...
I'm just using it as an example, not necessarily that, that's one that's asking for it, but...
Okay, so, I'm asking specifically, because of the size of lot and the frontage that we require, how many electronic message signs?
I, I don't know.
We, we looked at that
Yeah, that...
... when the board, not this board, but the past board, considered that ordinance, and there wasn't that many. I mean, the number to me is, seems to me, is around 15 properties in town that might meet the requirements that we had for electronic message signs.
Right.
And, but the five-foot setback distance from the property line really doesn't come into play. It could be 10 feet, it could be 15 feet, as Amanda points out. That distance doesn't, I mean, it matters, but I think the reason that we've selected this distance is to, to not adversely impact others that may want to redo their signs. If somebody has a sign at, on their property that's seven feet off their property line, and now we say it has to be 15, if they came in to change that sign, we'd say, "You have to move your foundation, move your electrical, and rebuild your sign 15 feet away instead of seven feet away." So, when we looked at the signs in town,
Mm-hmm.
... we determined that five-foot setbacks seem reasonable, because there were lots of signs that were up near the property line.
Correct.
And it didn't seem to have a real visual impact or problem for them to continue to have the sign there, as long as they complied with the rules that we're proposing in the new sign code.
Well, so, but, I mean, I guess I'm just worried that, I wonder if somewhere else at one of these other locations that you talked about, that it could be visually impairing to only have a five-foot setback. And actually, I'm wondering, like, the one at St. Andrews?
Yeah, that one's gotta be pretty close.
If that's, you know, I wonder if, if that has any impact on vision as you're turning? Probably not, because it's on the right-hand side.
I'm not aware of anybody calling complaining that there's a...
No, that one doesn't. You know, some of the properties I can think of off the top of my head that would likely qualify for an electronic sign would be probably the Loaded Buffalo business, they would qualify. Santa Maria, you know, for the church portion, I know they already have the, the school sign, but the church would, you know, likely probably be interested in a sign.
I think ABC Roofing on Route 45 would qualify.
Okay, so, that helps me, because those locations, five feet, as much as I don't like these signs five feet, wouldn't visually impair anything, which is really all I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, so, those are the types of businesses that meet the, those frontage and acreage requirements.
Okay. Well, then, I guess, as much as I would like to take them out altogether, I'm okay with that.
And we would still require the setback, the 50-foot from the residential.
Right.
So...
And the nets or the...
Yes, and we still have the time period requirement.
6:00 AM to 11:00 PM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Justice Sullivan?
I saw my light on?
Yes.
Thank you. We talked, someone mentioned this, two methods of dealing with signs that are illegal, the attrition method and the amortization method, and I, and I guess I had this definition explained to me, but tell me if I'm interpreting this right. Attrition means a sign that needs to be replaced because it's old, knocked down, worn out.
Correct.
Whereas, an amortization just sets a time limit by which a non-conforming sign must be replaced.
Yes.
And that time limit is five years, no?
Correct.
Well, you young people think five years is a long time, but really, it's not.
No, it's not.
And in five years, you're gonna have every, almost every pole, I would say, every pole sign that's here now will be here in five years. And you're going to go out, serve notice, it's gotta come down. And the mechanism of that will be serving a notice, and then
Right.
... a citation, or a letter, a notice of citation that's imminent, and then, then a notice of citation, and then?
We, you would go through a notice, and then likely, you'd have to do some sort of citation. We did consult legal on this, our special counsel, Kelly Cahill, about the time period, and we threw out a number, it was five, seven, 10, and she said that five is very, very, you know, normal of a time period, and you want to make sure that you give enough of a time period that, that if the sign depreciates over that time, that it's, it's an acceptable amount of depreciation, basically.
Yeah, I, I would say that if, if this is gonna be acceptable to the board, that in just the next few months, you would want to make the owners of a pole sign, or any other sign that is subject to this amortization schedule
Sure.
... notified
Right.
... that on a certain date, they gotta have a new sign.
And we, we talked to counsel about this, and for instance, in McHenry, they issued letters to these owners of the property, then if they actually don't comply, they came up with a system of, kind of a fee to keep it up over time. But this was after the time period ended, and they decided to extend it.
Well, the variance process is one that could be entered into evidently in order to get approval or an extension of the time.
It could, but, yeah, I mean, I would caution against granting too many var, because what makes someone, one person's sign, you know, better than somebody else's in terms of granting a variance? If you're gonna grant the variance, then perhaps you either extend or you get rid of that stipulation altogether.
Well, there's, we have to do everything upfront and at an early time, because the weeping and the gnashing of teeth will be something that will take up a lot of your time, and
Sure.
... it won't, you know, it won't be fun.
And this matter has not been, been any secret whatsoever. You know, we've been, we've been very, very open with those that have attended our public meetings. In all our meetings, we have been quite candid and said that there have been, this, this, there has been the discussion of amortization, and that staff was bringing this document forward with the recommendation of amortization and this five-year period. So, again, we fully have, we have fully disclosed that.
So, again, we have a grant program that we can make sure is fully funded so that we can help with, sorry, this is so funny to me, because you and I are not gonna be here for this when this goes through. So, we can make all the suggestions we want, but we won't have to hear the complaining either, which strikes me as very humorous, since I've been hearing it for 12 years. So, there is a grant program in place, and we will write that when we tell them, "Your sign will no longer be in compliance in five years, but you can apply for a grant that we will help you with up to 50%, up to X amount of dollars," in the hopes that we are helping these business owners to change their signs and get up to date. That was what the board decided.
That's correct. And Amanda and I have had a number of conversations about what are the steps, and what are we gonna do after the adoption of the code? How are we gonna let the business community know that there has been this change, you know, and everything leading up know, and everything leading up to that five-year period of time? You know, we've talked about putting articles in the newsletter and the e-blast, certainly doing a better job of marketing the sign program. I know that for the next budget year, I have asked for more money for this grant program. I've, you know, asked for, I'm asking for $25,000 towards it. So, you know, those are a series of things that we have come up with to kinda help matters out. You know, at our meeting, we have also disclosed that aside from just being government and just being maybe impart a little bit heavy-handed with this five-year amortization, we, we thought that we were coming with, we were also gonna be resourceful in providing the businesses with the tools such as the grant program to say here, yes, we have made this change, this change does impact about, what is it, twenty-five percent of the businesses in our community, but, you know, there are tools, and there is this grant program that helps matters out a little bit and kinda softens the, softens the blow. So, we have had a series of discussions, and I think we will continue to have discussions about what are the next steps.
Will that grant program be for the entire village, or is it still a selected area?
No, the grant program as it is written today is extended, is for the entire community, and will remain for, being for the entire community.
I hope that perhaps it would be, I hope that you will reach out to the Mundeline Business Alliance as a way to contact businesses.
The Mundeline, Mundeline Business Alliance has been very supportive of, of what we've been doing. They've been instrumental in helping us get the word out about the, some of the proposed changes and just spreading that word, and we will continue to work with them.
My understanding is that the business community is excited about this sign ordinance and feels like it'll put a better face on our village and help with economic development.
The business community is excited, so are a number of contractors that we have spoken with. There are a number of positive things, a number of things that are in this document that you couldn't do with the, with the ordinance that we have in place today. So, there are many steps forward from what we have. Is it a perfect document? Absolutely, but I think it covers a number of areas that the business community has been speaking, speaking for and desiring to, to get some more flexibility, flexibility in, in terms of signage.
Right, and I think if you look at the attachments to the packet, there is an attachment that shows examples of images of existing, and the existing being the existing code versus the proposed code. And you can see just with all the X's over what the existing code allows versus what today's code allows, it definitely opens up a lot of opportunities for businesses to do advertisement. It also opens up opportunities for organizations in town to do things by code. So, it, it will remove a lot of kind of anxiety that we get from businesses just wanting to do what you would think is a normal, everyday sign, and our code didn't allow for that, so.
And the other thing is that we are gonna prohibit some existing signs, some of the, you know, I would just remind the board that we have been having staff sort of turn their back on non-conforming signs, not enforcing our sign code, knowing that it would change, but we all agree that once we make this change to the new sign code, we'll support staff in their efforts to enforce the sign code immediately.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I, I just, anyone else? Okay. My comments are, I just wanna compliment staff. You know, it's been the two years where it's been going on a steady stream, but I'm just, my memory goes back to the beginning when we had our first meeting on this, and remember the first committee of the whole, we kinda stumbled out of the gate with that first meeting, but we came together the next one, and with our consultant there and with staff there, and we kinda came together and determined to be bold about this and respond to the desire in the community to see some change and to see it fairly quickly. And I know we didn't all get everything we wanted in this, but I think we've had a, obviously, a tremendous amount of dialogue, and it's a hundred and seventy-four pages, by the way, of clear definitions. I, you know, in reading through it, it seems like it's written in pretty clear English so that any business owner can read it and understand what the requirements are. I think it's outstanding. So, my compliments to staff and to the board, and it's really an announcement, I think, to our community and to others. I mean, we, it really is, in my mind, a bold document and that tells everyone that we are aesthetically, you know, aggressive here. We want to make a statement with our sign code that it's gonna be very business-friendly. In fact, there's more types of signs allowed, if I'm not mistaken, when you get through it.
That's correct.
It comes, it expands and brings in other types of signs that the current one doesn't address, so I think it's outstanding. You ready to take the roll? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Very good, and if I had to vote, I would vote in the affirmative as well. Okay.
Text amendment to Title 20, the next, as we've talked about, I think at the last board meeting, maybe a couple of board meetings, this is a motion, I'll make the motion to pass an ordinance amending certain sections of the municipal code relating to the zoning ordinance, Title 20, regarding parking space dimensions, impervious surface coverage, open fences, community centers, and recycling facilities.
Motion by Voss.
Second.
Second by Kim, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up, we have, this is for a variance for 1291 Casing Lane, are the petitioners here? Okay, just in case anyone has any questions. This is regarding a gazebo size. So, I'll make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact.
Motion by Voss.
Second.
Second by Sullivan, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commissioner's recommendations.
Second.
By Voss, second by Meyer, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And lastly, I'll make a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting a variation to section 20.52.040 parentheses, H, parentheses, 1, granting relief from the maximum square footage permitted for a gazebo at 1291 Casing Lane.
Motion by Voss.
Second.
Second by Meyer, discussion.
Yes, please.
Justice Voss.
I just wanna say that I don't normally grant variances, but in this case, I think that there's a compelling reason, given the size of your lot and where your lot is, of why this variance should be granted, and I will support it, though you might have to call 911 for Mr. Sullivan.
You're just getting soft.
[laughing]. That's all.
Justice Sullivan?
Second. That's maiden seconded.
Oh, no, no, we're, I thought you wanted to say-
Oh, no, 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 I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it. It looks like a beautiful thing.
It was maiden seconded already, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 fine.
Do you have anything?
No, it looks beautiful, I'm envious.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I'm hoping I'm done, because otherwise you're gonna have to give me a second. Um, let's see. That's it, I am done. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Communication and Marketing Committee, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no motions tonight, but I have a couple of updates. Last weekend, this was actually about yours, but the mayor's math challenge was last weekend. More than 185 students, which was double the number of participants from last year came, and so we had two feature articles in the Herald and the Pioneer Press. A nice bump for marketing there. I just wanted to shout out to some of the sponsors. We had $8,000 in scholarship money raised from these eight sponsors, Garden Fresh, McDonald's, McLean Fog, Fifth Third Bank, Consumers Co-op Association, Mundeline Community Bank, Northside Bank, and Steve's Window Cleaning. That's not you, right?
No.
All right. Also, last weekend was Coffee with the Mayor. Wanna talk a little about how that went?
Yeah, Coffee with the Mayor was at Omega, at the Side Room. We have that every, at the first Saturday every month, and it's myself and trustee Abernathy joined me for this one, and there were about a dozen people for about an hour and a half, I'd say, and we just talked village issues over a cup of coffee. It was great, and went over a wide variety of things and got into great detail, and it was very well-spirited and very nice.
Do you know when the next one is and who it's with?
I don't have the trustee yet. It's the first Saturday of April, and so it'll be at Omega again in the Side Room when you walk in on the right side. I'd look at the date if I had it, but we-
Sorry?
It's secure.
April 4th.
April 4th, okay, April 4th.
And there's a new business profile video up, and that one's for Tight Head Brewery, and it's, is it up on YouTube right now?
No.
Okay. So, what does this mean then here? Maybe it's being edited. It says business profile video.
We filmed it this last week-
Okay.
-over a Tight Head Brewery company.
So, it's being edited? All right, I'm getting a nod yes from the back of the room.
Very, very well.
All right. And lastly, I have that we are finishing up the quarterly newsletter, and that's gonna be distributed at the end of March. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, trustee Abernathy isn't present, so that takes us to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. Trustee Sullivan, how can you spend more of our money there?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one motion. This is in regard to a request for authorization to advertise for construction bids for the fiscal year ending 2016 street project. This is just part two? Okay. Everybody, I think you have seen the, the information regarding the, the part one and two of the street project. We're going to separate this into two bids and hopefully do everything, but if not, I think the, the split of the bidding process will help us make a decision in regard to how much we actually can do. So, this is a motion to authorize the public, the Department of Public Works and Engineering to solicit bids for the fiscal year 2016 street improvement project, part two. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by trustee Kim, discussion. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Very good. That takes us to other reports. Does any trustee have any other report or comment or issue? Yes, trustee Meyer?
Yes, I do. I'd like to announce that the Old Village Hall Study Report Committee will be presenting, the committee will be here at the next village board meeting, and they will be presenting in a PowerPoint presentation, a synopsis of the report, and the full report will also be available as part of our package for that next meeting.
Excellent. And that's been in the works for better part of-
Since probably like August.
Yeah? Since August. Excellent, well-
Yeah, August was when we made the committee selection, and September, we had our first meeting.
Tremendous. This is to answer the question or help us answer the question? What do we do with the Old Village Hall?
We have covered everything from A to Z.
I look forward to hearing your report, I know we all do, with great interest. Anything else? Other reports, anybody? All right, we'll move on to scheduled business. We have the omnibus vote items. Does any trustee wish to pull items one, two, or three?
I'd like to take two.
Trustee Kim would like to pull number two off. Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion to pass items one and three on the omnibus vote list?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kim, second by trustee Meyer, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, that takes us to item two, trustee Kim.
Um, I wasn't here for this meeting, so I wasn't sure how, like, can I just say present that I'm here? I mean, that was 2009.
I think we probably all, I don't know, was anyone?
Yeah?
Yeah, you were there. There you go.
Trustee Kim and I were not here for that meeting, so-
Semple, Sullivan, and Voss were.
If we don't, you know-
I mean-
Well, but we don't have three who were here for that meeting tonight since trustee Semple isn't here. Can we remove this and put it on the next meeting?
Yes. So, I'll need a motion to remove this from the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kim to remove item two from the agenda?
Second.
Second by Sullivan, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. That takes us to village staff reports, village administrator, Mr. Labado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one item for consideration by the board, and it's a resolution approving the final summary on the Downtown Redevelopment Village Hall Construction Project. And the summary of this, and I know Mr. Schuberg can answer more specific questions, but this closes out the Village Hall project. There's remaining roughly $52,000 worth of additional works that has been enumerated on a punchless item in your packet tonight. And one of the items that we take a lot of pride in is the fact that we received LEED Gold certification on the building, and that was just announced a short time ago. And so, that was always a very, always at the end of every conversation we had, where are we at with point systems? And it's based on point system, and so we're just thrilled that we were able to achieve that. It wasn't without a lot of hard work on the project. So, if there's any questions specifically we can answer on this, we'd be glad to.
Okay. Well, first, our compliments on getting LEED Gold, right? We've been talking about that since day one on this building, so that's excellent, you know? Congrats. I mean, that's, that's wonderful. Any, if there's no questions, then I guess we need a motion then, right?
Yes.
So, I need a motion from a trustee to adopt a resolution approving the final summary on Downtown Redevelopment Village Hall Construction Project.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Meyer, second by trustee Sullivan, further discussion? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I, I would just like to make one comment on this, and it's been said before, but maybe not as much publicly, but Weston Solutions has been a great partner in this building project, and, and they had some, like any project, there's been some unknowns and unexpected things that happened, and, and I have to say that they have been true to their commitment to Mundeline and to getting this project done. They had some overends, but they're not charging us for those, and they're sticking to what the contract says and the guaranteed maximum price. And it's just been, it's refreshing, I guess, to work with a company that, you know, their word means something to them, and that's how they've been acting all along. So, I just wanna let the board know that. It's been a pleasure to deal with them.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, did that wrap up your report?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Let's go to village attorney, Mr. Moreno.
I have no report, and I don't believe there is any further discussion.
Okay, thank you. Village clerk?
Yes. Tomorrow is the last day to register or do a change of address for voting eligibility in the April 7th consolidated election, the last day here in Village Hall. Once that closes tomorrow, the grace period begins March 11th through April 4th at the Lake County Clerk's Office in Waukegan, and March 23rd to April 4th at the Lake County Central Permit Facility on Winchester Road.
That it? Okay. Okay, there's no executive session tonight, no other business. That wraps it up. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Kim, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.